And we are supposed to have our city, our monthly city council meeting, but because we have three members absent this evening, three of our council members, we are going to have to, we do not have a quorum, we're going to have to call the meeting, postpone the meeting. So, we are going to have our public hearing that was scheduled also at six o'clock. I'm going to turn it over to our representative from Grant Works to explain what this, what this is about. We applied for a comprehensive plan grant through Grant Works and Carlos Becero, is that how you pronounce your name, Carlos? I hope.
That's correct. Yeah. Carlos Becero.
Anyway, he's going to kind of give us an overview of what this is about. And I just want to make this little announcement, these, you see these two notebooks up here? This is what they sent us to go over. So I asked Carlos if we could have a little bit more time to really study this, because it's a very important document. And I don't think council members, I don't think any of us have had time to really go through this. And since it is important, I'm going to ask that we, we wait, at least till our next meeting or, anyway, soon, we'll let Carlos know when we're going to get this done. But I am encouraging all of our council members to please go over this. We sent it out electronically, I don't know, a few weeks ago, right, CD? I don't know how long ago it was we sent it. But I doubt that anybody's read the 300 pages. And these are the maps. So, anyway. I'm going to turn this over to Carlos so that he can explain things here. I've got his PowerPoint ready, and he's, he's actually up in Austin, we decided to not make him drive down. Okay, Carlos, you're on.
All right, thank you so much, Mayor. Yeah, there, you know, it is a long plan, and I understand that the city might need more time to review it, and that's not a problem at all. I want to make sure that it's the document that you guys want. And also, you know, that it's the, you know, the, it meets all the, all the requirements of the grant and everything like that. Now, this, this will be the final public hearing, at any rate, for the planning grant. The grant is Texas CDBG grant number 7220044. And, you know, there's different ways, it is a long plan, there's different ways to read the plan, there's different sections in the plan in each chapter. And, you know, if you go to the end, you'll see that there's the goals, and then the implementation table and stuff like that. And that's kind of what we're going to concentrate on today. So we'll be, there's a lot more inventory and analysis in the, kind of in the, in the meat of the plan and the text that we're not really going to touch on. There's a lot of recommendations and different things. There's also a digital appendus, appendix that has example ordinances and different things where you'll see in the plan where it mentions it, that you can reference. Okay, so moving on then, the plan basically included the chapters of, let's see, it had a housing study, well, the base chapters, which is housing, land use, and population. And then it had infrastructure chapters, including the water, the sewer and drainage, and street systems. We also studied the thoroughfares system in, in Ivanhoe and the recreational system or the parks. And so I'm just going to go through each chapter and just kind of give the, the major improvement recommendations from each chapter. So, so for population, and it's time to, I'm sorry, Mayor, to, you can go to the next slide now, for the population slide.
We're there.
And, okay, great. And you'll see that the, the main thing for the population chapter is you want, we wanted to forecast the population to make sure that the city services and systems were up to capacity for the, at least for the future.
Why do you, why do you show it going down?
A 10-year window. And, and so we found that, the, we found that it's most likely right now, based on county and other factors, that the population's probably going to shrink a little bit. That's what's been happening, that's what Nathalie projected, and so I kind of went with her projection there. If that's the case, well, you know, there's probably things that you guys can, can do, like, you know, possibly think about, you know, closing some streets and different things like that, you know, or, but, you know, anyway, there are shrinking city services and stuff. But right now, it doesn't seem like, you know, it's going to be a big decline in population, so I wouldn't worry about it for the next 10 years or anything.
Okay, Carlos.
And, yes.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
The sad thing is, the census figures have come out. This was a, an approximation that you were using, census estimate of 19, 1960 people, and we liked that, because I think that's probably pretty close to where we are. The sad thing is that the census figures say that we're like 1350. So what do we do with that?
No.
Yes.
Is that right? That's crazy.
And Tyler County went from 22,000 to 17,000, and it's not, it's not accurate, it's totally off. We have grown.
That's...
And Tyler County has grown.
That's gotta be, yeah, that's gotta be off. I wonder if anybody, there are ways to contest that, you know?
No, I don't think so. I talked, I talked to our, our US Congressman, Brian Babin, who's, who's, you know, from this area, and asked if at the federal level, there was a lot of talk about it, because COVID happened, and the census was not properly taken. And so we are suffering the consequences of that, because grant, you know, grant funds are based on population. And now with this, this study coming out, do you have to adjust the figures before you actually publish it?
Um...
I mean, I like your figures better than the US Census.
Yeah, those are the redistricting figures right now, so I don't consider them the official, you know, 2020 census figures just yet. They were used for redistricting data, and I don't know what, you know, I, you know, I, we're not considering them official just yet. And I think that a lot of them are going to be contested. So no, I, you know, I don't think that we'll need to include them. If you don't, if you want, I can include, if you'd like, I can include a line about that and stuff.
Well, I don't know that, you know, if you don't have to, I'd just sue not, I mean, I'd rather, you know.
No. No, 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 I think we can stick with what we have, based on the fact, especially that, you know, that it was written that way. And if that's the way you guys feel, I, I don't see how that's possible personally, so...
Oh, absolutely not. Absolutely not. We've, we've grown, and, you know, our, 10 years ago, it was 1450 or something like that, and now it's, we've, we've gotten a lot more people, especially after COVID, a lot of people moved up here that, that had been weekend people, and they moved up here full-time. So we, we've really increased our population. Anyway, thank you, Carlos.
Anyway, yeah, and I agree with you, I think that the census figures were greatly skewed by the, by the COVID and everything this time, sorry. At any rate, we should move on to housing, then, so if you go to the next slide, Mayor, you'll see the general breakdown of the housing units in Ivanhoe, in the different pie charts, and the, the map shows if you, I know that everything's kind of small, but the green is in good condition, yellow would be, I think, green is standard, yellow is deteriorated, and red is technically dilapidated. So, yeah, there, you got, there's a lot of yellow and red in different parts of the town, obviously, that may need some attention, or they may be, and I think some of them are even abandoned structures and stuff like that. So, but in general, the, the improvement suggestions for that would just be to continue with the home program, or, and to participate in the home program, to consider affordable housing, such as an affordable apartment complex and other development, you know, using USDA and other resources for that, mentioned in the housing chapter. Continue to enforce and update the abandoned and substandard buildings ordinance, of course, and the manufactured homes ordinance. Continue to support fair housing initiatives. And finally, and I think an important point in the chapter, it's actually one of the, it's not a actual goal, it's, it's just one of the suggestions, more in the analysis part. It's a statement that says Ivanhoe could market themselves to potential housing developers looking to build attractive lakeside senior or rental housing. The city should rebrand itself as a charming lakeside village to attract small-scale multifamily housing and commercial developments. So that was in the housing chapter. We didn't have an ED chapter, so this is kind of where this statement ended up. The idea here, and was people talked about, what I heard people talking about in Ivanhoe was to, to develop, you know, things like RVs, that means the lakes and everything are very beautiful, it's very relaxed, you know, environment, there's a lot of potential for resort type of stuff. Two, I think, I know some, you know, major, you know, infrastructure things have to happen first, but, you know, it definitely has potential in the senior, probably, housing and, you know, retirement market, and the winter tax and even market, I think, you know, with RV parks and different things like that. So enough on housing then. Moving on then to land use, if you go to the next slide, Mayor, you'll see the land use, there's a lot of, kind of that light brown, the tan, that's semi-developed, so those are actually kind of vacant lots that are parceled out. So there's a lot of vacant land use, and obviously, you know, semi-developed, it's 44% of Ivanhoe's city limits, so a lot of room for development, and things are really spread out. Two, you know, one wish is, I mean, that's good for, in a way, for the relaxed, you know, kind of peaceful nature of the community, for sure, but it really, it would increase, of course, it increases all the costs that it would take to do, you know, infrastructure in the town. But anyway, it's, I don't know that there's a great solution for that, but, you know, that, that is an interesting, and, well, it is a very interesting problem. The major improvement suggestions in the land use chapter would be to continue enforcing the flood damage prevention ordinance, nuisance ordinance, consider the, consider a subdivision ordinance, and then, and then other things such as, there's, there's some other recommendations such as promoting voluntary yard cleanup, things for competitions for yard of the month, best maintained property, you know, with signs posted, on winning property. You could also do this thing called a self-assessment, described in the land use chapter, in which you send a survey out to landowners, you know, asking them to think about how, you know, what their property, you know, how, what their property's condition is. And lots of times, those kind of self-assessments make, kind of motivate property owners to, to improve their own properties and voluntarily do so, and things like that. So there are some, some suggestions about, you know, voluntary kind of land use and cleanup and stuff like that, so. Okay, and so, let's see, let's move on then to the, you start the infrastructure chapter. So for water, the water system, they just, they basically wanted to see what the water system needed to, for the, you know, immediate future for improvements. So the first phase there, and these are all timed out and priced for CDBG granting, the first phase there would be for a new well site with a generator. Second phase then would be for 7,000 linear feet of new water line along Charmine Drive, Charmine Drive. And the third one, third phase is 4,500 feet of water line along Ivanhoe Estates Drive, and you'll see the locations.
Carlos?
For those, yes.
Carlos, hang on just a second, one of our council members wants to ask a question.
Sure, no problem.
So would this be for the city to own, or would this be a grant for the Southwest Water Corporation?
Right, so it would be a grant, basically, I think that you guys could apply for improvements, you know, on behalf of the, you know, the water system, from what I understand. And so it would be, it would kind of, kind of, I guess, I, do you guys not apply for improvements, for water improvements and stuff like that already? I thought you had some grants, you know, related to the...
No. No.
We, we, we would like to have our own water corporation or a municipal utility district, but right now, we're at the mercy of...
Southwest Water.
Southwest Water Corporation.
Right, right. Again, no, I understand that, that they own the system, but I guess what this is looking at are improvements to, to, you know, that, that we, that the engineers felt were needed within the system. And I'd have to go back to see what, let me see, um, so basically, the funding sources here, are basically, yeah, USDA and TWDB loans are also mentioned as far as funding sources, and also general obligation bonds, so. But I guess, if you don't, if that's not an arrangement, I, I could look into that, I don't, I did, I thought that that perhaps was possible. I guess if not, the only thing that we could do is say, well, these are suggestions for the water, you know, improvement district, or the, the owners, the Southwest, you know, Water Corporation.
Yeah.
For them.
Okay, let's move on.
Yeah. Okay, well, at any rate, let's see, so, next slide here is on drainage. So the main thing there would be, phase one is reconstruction of the Lake Ivanhoe Dam, obviously, which includes a replacement of emergency discharge structure at Lake Tristan, and that's a very expensive, obviously, project. Then the second phase is to maintain or improve, maintain roadside ditch in problem areas along Durwood Drive, Gilbert Drive, Charmaine Drive, and then another maintenance phase and third phase to go along Winchester, Ivanhoe, Mayberry, Charmaine, Chanticleer. And you'll see the locations for those improvements there. And the next slide, Mayor, and we should be up to slide number eight there. But if you then move to the next slide for streets...
Didn't really go to seven.
Yeah, and, yeah, well, we skipped over, they had one for the water thing, and that was not...
Okay.
We moved on to...
Drainage, seven.
So now you're on streets, number nine, right?
Yes, thank you, yes. Okay, so for streets, basically, you know, all the streets needed improvements of some sort or another in order to bring them into some kind of a standard paved, you know, asphalt condition. So it's, you know, obviously, it's very expensive here, that, you know, there's not a lot of, as far as I know, I don't think for your area, there's going to be a whole lot of things that you can do as far as funding for this. But, you know, I, I will say, let me see, if I can find that, let me see what's suggested in the chapter. Yeah, it's all general funding and general obligation funds and stuff like that. But this is a good type of, if you go to, the, if you go to the next slide, it basically covers every, every, every street.
Every street. And we've had some work done since then, and of course, we've gotten some grants, too.
Okay, okay. Well, we can, we can reform this chapter if you need, that's not a problem, but, you know, take out some streets if you want, and add some different types of funding sources. But any kind of changes you want in the plan, definitely let me know, and I can work on them, send you new copies, and, and, and incorporate all that and stuff like that. But anyway, let's move on there to slide number 11 for the thoroughfares chapter. Major improvement projects there again would be in phase one to add sheer right-of-way markings and caution signage to Ivanhoe Drive, Chanticleer Drive, and Lakewood Drive for a bike network is the idea. And that would include mostly signage and some crosswalks. Other major improvement projects would then be to install stopper yield signs in phase two at identified intersections on the map. And phase three would be to develop a second entrance exit to Ivanhoe at either Mill Creek Drive or CR 1205 to alleviate pressure on Ivanhoe Drive is the, the final phase there. If you go to the next slide, is the number 12, those are the locations for those projects. Yeah, so the, the bike network would be in blue, and the stop yield signs, the yellow circles, and then the exit entrance would be over there, the north side of town. And so, okay. So, next slide is slide number 13, recreation and open space. This probably, this slide probably has the most meaning in it, just because there's, you know, there's so many recreational areas. But, so this would be a lot of applying to funding for Texas Parks and Wildlife, basically. So apply for funding fall 2023 to, to install a new recreational, to install some new recreational facilities at Hewlett-Pad Park, which would include a soccer field and light activity area, when that's funded. And then in 2025, apply to improve recreational facilities at Lake Camelot Park or Ivanhoe Memorial Park, which would be some things like inclusive play activities and inclusive playground equipment that could, can be enjoyed by children with physical disabilities at Lake Camelot Park and/or, you know, Ivanhoe Memorial Park. Also install light activity areas such as domino or card tables, things like that at Lake Camelot Park. And then in fall 2028, apply again to the same grant program to improve recreational facilities at Candy Cane Park and No Name Park on Charmaine Drive, and then there, install tennis, a new tennis court, new basketball court at No Name Park and, and, oh, at No Name Park on Charmaine Drive East, I'm sorry.
So does it matter, can, can we still apply for these if the parks and lakes are private?
Uh, well, basically, these, they would need to be transferred over to the city. I think there's some parks in the, in the plan about that, it would depend on their, I think, I think there was some idea about the, you know, neighborhood association donating these parks to the city.
No, no, that's not been a conversation, we just decided to just see what suggestions would come out of looking at the parks, because when they came out here and went up and down every street, of course, they saw the parks. And so we said, well, you know, go ahead and tell us what you would suggest be put in each one of those. But there's no plan for any transfer property at this point.
Okay, no, no, no transfer of property, okay. Well, if the neighborhood association would be willing to do that, let me just say, you know, that would pay for a lot of the match for the park grant, and it's, it is a 50% match on all these park grants, so they're pretty hefty sometimes. So, but if you do get the, the property transferred to you guys at the correct time, like after you apply for the grant, I think, in between the window before you're awarded or something like that, that need to look into that, then you can use that as just part of your match, match money. But anyway, that's a moot point, I guess. But anyway, these are, yeah, suggestions for what should happen at these parks, at any rate. And then the map again on number 14 shows all the different parks and the locations of the different improvements phasing. And that's pretty much it. So I know there were some questions that I've answered, I, there probably may be more, so if anybody has any more, please let me know, and I'll do my best to see if I can answer them.
Okay, we got a lot of public here, Carlos, I'm going to open it up to see if anyone has any questions about this. Like I say, this is a very quick overview of a 300-page document.
So I have a quick question, this is the final reading of a...
This is a public hearing that we have to have in order to, you know, there's all these requirements for the grant.
Yeah, and he said it was the final...
Yeah, this is the final public hearing.
Okay.
So we'll...
So what are we trying to accomplish with this now?
Um, it's, it's basically, it's for the public, it's, it's, it's the hearing to, to document that the public were told about the grant and the conclusions...
Okay.
Yeah, in the grant and stuff like that, and that's basically it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. CD's got the mic, if anybody wants to ask any questions or anything, he'll run around the...
CD, do you have any questions?
And like I say, this, we have it in electronic form, we're certainly not going to be printing this out, anybody that wants to come and look at it can. Yeah, we're not making copies for the 300 pages.
I would encourage everybody to come take a look at it.
Yeah, yeah. And everybody's input is important, and like I say, these, these comprehensive plans like this do help when you're applying for a grant. You know, this is something we have planned, it's in the plan. So I appreciate you, Carlos, if there's no other questions, we will close the public hearing.
That's very good, Carlos, thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Oh, wait, we have a, we have a hand raised back here.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
Hang on just a second. We got CD running. Let's, this is interesting.
Well, if you want to call that running.
Well, it's the best he can do. Yes, ma'am.
Is this a grant from the federal government or from the state of Texas?
Uh, this, okay, did you hear that, Carlos? Is it a grant from the federal, is it federal or is it the state of Texas?
Uh, the planning grant, it was a federal grant, but it was, it was through the state of Texas, it's a, it's a housing and urban development grant ultimately, but they, the people who administer are the Texas Department of Agriculture.
Ah, yeah. Okay. Does that answer your question? Yeah, most, isn't it just almost all the money, it comes from the feds and then it goes through, you know, different departments in the state? So this was TDA.
Yeah.
And Grant Works, I think Carlos was the one that notified us that there was this grant opportunity, and so...
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
I think you did it. So he, he notified us of the opportunity, and we took advantage of it, and...
It is greatly appreciated.
Yes, thank you very much, Carlos. Any other questions?
No problem.
All right, I think our public hearing is, is concluded, and we appreciate you being on the phone, I should have made you drive down here.
Yeah.
One of these days, one of these days, we'll meet you, Carlos.
Okay, right, yes. Well, please let me know if you guys, if there's any changes that you need, and I will be sure to incorporate them and send new, new versions down.
Yeah, we'll let you know where we are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much, I appreciate it, thank you for having the public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Okay, bye.
All right, now, what we have, would you ladies like to come up here?
Oh, let me turn this down.
You don't look so hot today. We hadn't had time to go
You're probably as tired as I am. Okay. This is a proclamation that I'm going to go ahead and read. It's Tyler County Child Abuse Prevention Month, it's April 2022. I think next year what we need to do is do it in March.
Kind of like at the end, maybe, if y'all
Right, right. So we'll do that. But anywhere, whereas, and these figures are alarming. Whereas there were 253,054 reports of child abuse or neglect last year in Texas. And whereas there were 157,519 completed investigations of child abuse or neglect last year in Texas. And whereas there were 199 child deaths as a result of child abuse or neglect last year in Texas. And where there was 272 reports of child abuse or neglect last year in Tyler County. And whereas there were 169 completed investigations of child abuse or neglect last year in Tyler County. And whereas there were 45 confirmed victims of child abuse or neglect last year in Tyler County. Whereas there were 18 children removed from their homes because of child abuse or neglect last year in Tyler County. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a community problem affecting the current and future quality of life of a community. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends upon involvement among all people. And whereas communities must make an effort to promote programs that benefit children and their families. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and all citizens should become more involved in supporting families to provide safe nurturing environments for their children, giving them the opportunity to grow up to be caring, contributing members of the community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kathy Bennett of Ivanhoe, Tyler County, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Ivanhoe. I also proclaim that Sunday, April 24th, we're just barely in time, to be Blue Sunday. And in so doing, urge all citizens to join in a national effort to raise awareness about the importance of preventing child abuse and showing support by wearing blue in support of the prevention of child abuse and neglect. So be sure, Sunday, wear your blue. And tell everybody why you're wearing blue, you know. And, and I would like to turn the mic over to you ladies. Would you introduce yourselves and say a few words for us?
Hello, I'm Tina Self, I'm the Chair of the Child Welfare Board. I've been on the board for probably 18 years. This is, and this is Terri Allen, she's been our actually Chair for the last probably 20 years. She's been on the board a lot longer. We also have Mike McCully, our Chief of Police, who's been our board, her, him and Ms. Allen for the longest. We have Kathy Harris, she's our Secretary, Dolores Wiggly's our Treasurer, Paula Nash is going to be our Vice Chair. We have Matt O'Neill, and Matt is the adult Director of Probation, I'm losing. And we have Stephen Starock, Melanie Calhoun, Stephanie Smith, and Judge Tricia Ford. We'd like to just make, you know, be here tonight, make everyone aware of Child Abuse Month. It means a lot to us. We do all, we take care of all the foster children here in Tyler County and we work really hard to raise a lot of money to do that. And also, of course, our Commissioners Court, they help us out, too. But we thank y'all for letting us be here tonight, we really appreciate Ivanhoe, yeah, you know, being behind us. Thank you.
Well, this is just an informal gathering. Does anybody have anything to say? I do. I'd like to encourage people, we have elections coming up. We have an election May 7th, which, we had a presentation here the other night that was put on by the school board to talk about the, the bond that they're trying to pass. I guess the attendance was pretty sparse, but it was just to get information out there. It is, did we record that? No, we didn't. Well, that was up to them, anyway. We, we just allowed them to utilize the facility. We're not supporting anything or, or, you know, we're not taking a stand one way or the other. But the other thing, there are two items on the ballot and propositions, I guess they are. And, let me see, okay. That this SJR number two, Second Special Session, I'll tell you, this was so convoluted, you cannot understand what it means. I finally called David Luther and I said, okay, interpret this. Because they put things on the ballot and you can't understand what it says. And basically, in 2018, the legislature passed, well, legislation to reduce property taxes, school property taxes. And I guess what the state did at that point was provide more funding from the state and so they were able to reduce the ad valorem taxes on, for schools. But they left out any provision for seniors. And so what this is, is to bring the seniors into it. Now, they're not, it's not going to be retroactive to 2018 or 19 when it took effect, but they are, they did realize that seniors were, did not get any benefit from that and so they're, adjusting that. That's what that vote is for. So if you're
When you say bringing the seniors into it, what does that mean?
Then it means the seniors will be getting a reduction in their ad valorem taxes for school tax. If you vote for, if it passes, okay. And then the other one is, this is also about public school funds taxation, and it's raising the homestead exemption from 25,000 to 40,000. So, you know, you might want to go out and vote.
What were the proposition numbers to get that?
Well, you know, I'm not sure exactly how they are in the ballot. There's only two propositions, so it's pretty clear. But do go out and vote and then be sure and vote on May 24th. We do have one of our candidates for County Judge here, Melissa Riley. I think most of us know her. And there's runoff elections for several of the positions, County Treasurer is a runoff and what others?
Fisher Precinct Two
Yeah. Yeah, so those, those other two don't affect us. But our County Judge and County Treasurer are in runoffs, not, those positions are in runoffs. So be sure and vote May 24th. Now, there's early voting.
Yes, the week before.
The week before. So just, I encourage everybody to go out and vote, be, you know, take a part in your community and your country. Now, is there anybody else that has any comments? Oh, and by the way, most, most of you probably know by know that Joanne Grumion passed away on April 8th and the family is going to have a memorial service at the Catholic Church here in town on the 30th of April. A visitation at 11:00 AM and rosary at noon and the mass at 1:00. So she was really a beloved member of our community, so just wanted to mention that. Let's see.
I spoke to Mr. Grumion today and he's doing remarkably well.
Yeah, I've, I've been visiting since he's my neighbor. Oh, this is, this is something that's interesting. You can now go on the website, the Texas, txt.texas.gov and get your driver's license renewed, you can get your state ID renewed, your vehicle registration. And so it, it kind of helps in time. You don't have to go to the tax office or do whatever you had to do before to be able to do that, so it saves. And they're, they're talking about doing more and more so that you can do it online and not have to go and line up.
You got to do it the way they're telling you because there's a lot of companies trying to get your money and you think you're getting it done and they're taking your money. So you have to go by the letter, what you're reading.
Yeah, make sure it's the, yeah.
But can I do it three times in a row? Like if I did it this year, I can do it online when it comes eight years from now, but then I have to go back then.
Oh, to renew your driver's license? Yeah, every so often they want you up in, in person. They test your eyes and whatever, make sure you can still see the road. Okay, any other comments or questions? Sorry, we didn't have our meeting tonight. It's txt.texas and it's T-E-X-A-S, not Tex, not TX, .gov. And that's going to be a great resource, especially when they get, you know, more and more things that you can do online. CD, did you have any comments? Okay, then we're done. We don't have to adjourn, there was no meeting called. Thank you, ladies, we'll see you.
So did you hear that one of the county employees returned their
The misappropriated
About the place that James and Ramona Davis had on the other side of Tristan?